All right, good night, Eric. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the May 22 meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission to Order. Mrs. Caselli, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Dallow.
Here.
Mr. Sico.
Here.
Mr. Wozniak.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Chairman Moffin is absent tonight. Secretary Moore is absent tonight, and Vice Chairman Turner, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Support, uh, moved by Mr. Sico, supported by Mr. Dallow. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is correspondence, a review of the Oakland Township master plan. Mr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is that standard process that we go through on a regular basis where a neighbor and community submitted a copy of their plan for our review. Oakland Township shares a corner-to-corner relationship to us at the northwest corner of Shelby Township. The, um, their, their planning designation for that area, which is their southeast corner, is for low-density residential and open space, and most of that area, that square mile that abuts us, is occupied by the Stony Creek Metro Park. So if you look at the redevelopment in our community, that area is pretty much low-density, large-lot development, so those planning policies and land use policies are consistent. So it's our recommendation to offer a supportive recommendation to Oakland Township.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to support the adoption of the Oakland Township master plan.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Sico, supported by Ms. Commissioner Dallow. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, tonight we have two site plans and three public hearings. The first site plan is number seventeen dash nineteen for Bassam Ziyada, Murphy Oil USA Incorporated, twelve-two-two-three, Twenty-Three Mile Road. Have the applicant come forward, give us an idea of what they'd like to do.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, my name is Bassam Ziyada. I live at thirty-one-hundred North Verona Lane, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I'm a senior project engineer for Murphy Oil, and, uh, we're, uh, we're looking at, uh, remodeling our existing Murphy Station on Twenty-Three Mile Road. Uh, the existing station has four dispensers. What we're planning on doing is demoing the entire site, removing the existing tanks, uh, demoing the building, demoing the canopy, and keeping all the three access points to the site the same. Um, what we will do when we demo the site, we will have an environmental firm onsite during the removal of the existing tanks, and, uh, that way, if there is any contamination that we were not aware of, we'll follow all state and, you know, regulations as far as removing the material into a certified landfill before we move forward. Um, I think we, uh, we followed all the requirements from the township, and we're here to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Nguyen, you want to add anything to that?
It is a very complete site plan. There's only a few minor corrections. One is showing the ground sign location. That's only relevant if they're going to do a new sign. Um, we do need a, a lighting plan with fixture details and a note that there's, um, no outdoor merchandising. And finally, if there's, um, any roof-mounted HVAC equipment, we'd need to see a detail of how that's going to be screened. But this, this was a very complete and well-done application, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Dallow?
Explanation, Mr. Nguyen. We have two items here on the agenda, and they're both like an expansion of a business. Can this dealt with an administrative level, or?
You know, there's, that's a fine line, Mr. Dell. I usually like to bring them to the commission so you see what's going on. I, you know, I think it's, it's the proper protocol.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nguyen.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nguyen, the question, I thought I heard him say he was going to demo the building. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So that would not allow it to be done administratively?
Yeah, this was too big of one.
Okay.
I mean, the only, the only other one is the Taco Bell, but that was such an important plan for elevations that I didn't want to skip over that and not have them show, show what the new plan is. But yeah, this was, this was substantial enough that I wouldn't have been comfortable doing it administratively.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
This is Caselli.
I move to approve site plan application number seventeen dash nineteen, Bassam Ziyada, for Murphy Oil USA, one-two-two-two-three, Twenty-Three Mile Road, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Caselli, supported by Mr. Appone. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. Caselli?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak. Oh, he went out. I'm sorry, Mr. Wozniak had to go out for a second. Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Sico?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. I want to back up before we move on to the site plans. I neglected to, um, pick up one item. We need to formally approve the minutes from our May eighth, two thousand seventeen, meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, back on our normal agenda here, next site plan number fourteen dash twenty-one for Ellen Sell, GT, GDP Group, for Taco Bell, thirteen-nine-fourty, Twenty-Three Mile Road. Applicant is here. Have her come on down. You can, yeah, put it right there.
Hi, my name is Ellen Sellie. I'm with GPD Group, and I'm here tonight to represent Taco Bell and the remodel that they're proposing on Twenty-Three Mile. Uh, this site is an existing building, an existing site, and, um, the remodel is going to incorporate mostly ADA deficiency updates to make sure those meet code, and that goes for inside and outside work. And then the other thing is to update the brand image when appropriate. So, um, the majority of these updates will be inside. When you walk in, uh, the vest wheel doors there, you'll see new furniture for, for seating, and there'll be some upgrades to the restroom. So there'll be a new look inside. Outside-wise, uh, there, a lot of the building is existing. We have, uh, mostly the stone wainscot and the brick facade. There's only a little bit of a band of ephesus around the top that we're looking to, to change that coloring there. So right now, the existing is, it's a four-tone geometric pattern, and we're looking to change that to a single purple color, and it's the purple Taco Bell color. Additionally, there are four what they call, or excuse me, six what they call expression panels, and they're framed out, looks like picture frames on the outside of the building, and currently those match the existing four-tone geometric pattern, and we're looking to put Taco Bell artwork there, which will also match the artwork inside the building. And this artwork highlights the, the sauces, the sauce packets for Taco Bell, and, uh, those, um, expression panels are going to be three-millimeter die-bond, and they're going to be attached to the ephesus finish there. Additionally, then, Adam, if you could flip that over, we have, um, the site work, which is very minor. Um, there are the ADA deficiency upgrades to meet the current code. Um, when it was built, it was up to code, but now new codes are in place. So there are some grading changes. We have a little bit of asphalt removal. We also have sidewalk removal and upgrades at both entrances. Um, other than that, though, the site will remain the same. We are looking to, um, do a few cosmetic things onsite as well, so that would be paint the light poles and paint the dumpster doors.
So basically, what you're doing, this is the new corporate style of the building? So you're just updating what's currently there?
Uh, yes, as, as close to the new corporate as we can.
Right. Okay. Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? Mr. Nguyen, go ahead.
I have no, no objections, Mr. Chairman. They've satisfied all the zoning requirements.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dallow.
I move to approve the modified site plan for Taco Bell restaurant at one-three-nine-four-zero Twenty-Three Mile Road, uh, number fifteen dash thirty, as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Dallow, supported by Mrs. Sico. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Sico?
Yes.
Mrs. Caselli?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, we're moving on now to our first of three site plans this evening. This one is, our public hearings for this evening. This one is site plan number sixteen dash twenty-three. Dino Yusevik, Utica Van Dyke Towing, four-nine-two-five, Twenty-Two Mile Road. And, uh, Mr. Caselli, would you read the notice as published?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, Dino Yunkavik, Utica Van Dyke Towing, forty-three-five-hundred Utica Roads, Sterling Heights, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-four. Proposed use is outdoor storage of vehicles. The location is a vacant parcel north side of Twenty-Two Mile Road between Ryan Road and Shelby Road. Site plan number seventeen dash twenty, SLU dash seven. Sidwell number twenty-three dash zero-seven dash two-zero dash four-zero-two dash zero-one-zero. The legal description: The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, fifty-two-seven-hundred Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from eight-thirty to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one-ten of two thousand six as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffitt, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary, published May seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Thirteen property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on May fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, does the notice meet all legal requirements as stipulated in local ordinance and state statute?
Yes, it did.
And could you explain the uses under the present zoning and if this special land use is appropriate?
The current zoning is heavy manufacturing, which is our most liberal industrial district. This request is being made. It is a special land use because of the vehicle outdoor storage that's requested that is, requires special land use approval.
Okay. Mrs. Caselli, do we receive any correspondence on this?
Not that I know of, no.
None. Okay. All right, the format for the public hearing tonight will be as follows. Petitioner or his or her representative will give a presentation stating the reason for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner may make any concluding remarks. Mr. Mosier is here, so he can go ahead and begin.
Good evening. Um, yeah, William Mosier with Apex Engineering Group, one-four-nine-five-five Technology Drive, Shelby Township. On behalf of the petitioner, uh, basically, we come before you tonight for, to seek site plan approval for the expansion of, in essence, the existing Utica Van Dyke Towing site on the north side of Twenty-Two Mile Road.
Could you speak up a little louder to the mic?
Yeah.
Thank you.
To seek, uh, a parking lot expansion for the, the extra storage for vehicles at the current site for Utica Van Dyke Towing on the north side of Twenty-Two between Ryan and Shelby Roads. Site's one, one and a half acres approximately. We have a hundred and seventy-one feet of frontage along Twenty-Two Mile Road. It is zoned heavy manufacturing, which fits the, the special land use requirement for this act, uh, for this use. The, we're going to eliminate a curb cut. We're going to use the existing improved entrance to Utica Van Dyke Towing to gain access. Uh, approximately seventy-seven spaces on a gravel surface for the expansion of that lot. Uh, that's, the entire site will be fenced in, as is the current site. Uh, we're going to continue the same landscape theme that's along Twenty-Two Mile Road. Uh, we meet and exceed the, the required trees for frontage and parking lot. Uh, we feel that it's very compatible and comparable with the uses along that corridor for Twenty-Two Mile Road, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any commissioners have any questions? Okay. This is going to be the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. Now, if anyone from the audience wishes to speak on this, they can come forward now. Go in once, twice, hearing none. Okay, bring it back up to the board. Mr. Nguyen?
Chairman, just a couple of questions. The first is, uh, we have to just verify that the gravel surface specifications comply with our Township Engineers' requirements. The fire department wanted to make sure there was access to the hydrant. Um, the comments from the engineer are relatively minor. Again, Mr. Mosier is accurate. This is just an extension of the existing use on the site, and, you know, we've tried to make sure these sites look a little better on Twenty-Two Mile Road, and Mr. Yunkavik's first site did a wonderful job of doing that. You really can't see the storage in the back, so this is an excellent submission.
Okay. Mr. Mosier, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
That's it? Okay. I'll have a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Movement is supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Planning Commission is a recommendation and body, and we must, our recommendation must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capa, the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. Planning Commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table to evaluate the information we've received this evening. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Township Board of Special Land Use Application seventeen dash twenty to permit the use of this site for outdoor storage based on the following findings. Number one, the intended use of this site for outdoor storage is consistent with other similar businesses along Twenty-Two Mile. Number two, access will be provided by the existing driveway minimizing the need for an additional curb cut to Twenty-Two Mile Road. Number three, the proposed front-yard landscaping will limit the visibility of the site from the road. And number four, there are no abutting residential neighborhoods that would be impacted by the special land use.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Sico, supported by Commissioner Appone. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Sico?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Caselli?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, our next, um, site plan public hearing is for Shay Walter, Simply Essential Bodyworks, one-four-zero-nine-zero Lakeside Boulevard, north of Hall Road, east of Shaner. Mrs. Caselli, will you read this notice?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for the approval of the following special land use. The applicant, Shay L. Walter, Simply Essential Bodyworks, one-four-zero-nine-zero Lakeside Boulevard, Shelby Township, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-five. The proposed use is massage therapy. The location, one-four-zero-nine-zero Lakeside Boulevard, north of Hall Road, east of Shaner. Site plan number seventeen dash twenty-two, SLU dash eight. The sidwell number twenty-three dash zero-seven dash three-six dash three-two-six dash zero-zero-six. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, fifty-two-seven-hundred Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from eight-thirty AM to five PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one-ten of two thousand six as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffitt, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary, published May seventh, two thousand seventeen. Four-hundred-and-sixty-nine property owners and one applicant was notified by first-class mail on May fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, does this notice meet all requirements of state statute and local ordinance?
Yes, it does.
And could you please explain the uses under this zoning and whether this special land use request is appropriate?
The zoning is C-five, which is a multi-use district, which is exactly how it sounds. Retail's permitted, multifamily, recreational. However, because there's a massage therapy request that is a special land, special land use is required in either a office or commercial zone.
Okay, thank you. Do we receive any correspondence on this one either?
No, we did not.
Okay. For, the format for this will be the same as the other public hearing. A petitioner will give her presentation stating the reason for the request. Commissioners then may ask questions. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner will give any concluding remarks. Go ahead, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commissioner and Commission. Um, my name is Shay Walter. I live on one-four-zero-nine-o Lakeside Boulevard North, Shelby Township. I am looking to open my own business, and I do massage, and it's one of my passions. Um, I look to make it affordable for everyone, and the space is perfect for me to do so. Um, I would like to offer massage, as in prenatal, deep tissues, body scrubbing, body masking, stuff along that lines.
You currently work at a massage therapy place?
I do. I work at, um, well, this is my outfit from work today. I work in a Birmingham Spa, Spa Mariana, and I also work in Rochester Hills for Massage Heights. So, my license is current, and I plan on renewing it in, well, this September, so.
Yeah, since you're, you want to open your business on or about September first?
Yes. September first would be my goal.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, sure, I do.
Mrs. Caselli, go ahead.
Do you plan on having additional employees, or?
Currently, I cannot, because I have to build the business myself. Um, in two, three years from now, yes, it's possible.
Mm-hmm.
But currently, no.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we're going to open it to the public, but before we begin, I'm going to say this is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are, again, a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. Mr. Nguyen, do you have any comments on this?
No, there's, there's no, no objections from our end. This is really one of those uses. It fits perfectly in this location. The reason we do the special land use is that if massage therapy is incidental to another business, it's a permitted use, but when it's a standalone, it's required special land use. And you recall, we've had a couple of those this past year where they were going in strip centers. This is an ideal fit here, and I have no objection.
Okay. Anyone from the floor wish to come forward and speak on this? Come on forward, sir. If you could sign in on the piece of paper and give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Harry Zarowski. I live at five-one-three-five-two, Forrester Lane. Shay is my granddaughter, and I'm sure you would know that I wouldn't say nothing bad about her, but I can honestly say, a lot of parents and grandparents can't say the same thing I can about her. She, uh, visits my wife and I regularly. She's ambitious. She comes and sees us. She spends time with us, just to visit or help us. Uh, she grew up in Shelby. She went, graduated from Utica School System. Uh, she worked the two jobs, and had, she still finds time to come see my wife and I. And, uh, she went to a certified massage school. She received her license from the State of Michigan, and, uh, she's worked real hard to try to open this up. So I hope you, uh, consider this very strongly, and, because I know she would be an asset to Shelby and to the business community, because she's a hard worker. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward and offer any words of advice? Go in once, twice, none? Bring it back up to the board. Mr. Nguyen, have anything? Oh, come on forward. You have anything else you'd like to add, ma'am? Thank your grandpa or anything?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, grandpa. Um, one other thing is, I did volunteer for the nature center for about five years. I worked with Dan Farmer, like, he was my buddy. Um, but otherwise, I really do hope you guys consider this. I plead for it. It's my dream, so thank you.
Mr. Nguyen, I did notice one thing in the packet, and I think we talked earlier today. You said the police department had already vetted this, which is good.
Yes, yeah. We, you know, they, they've received copies of all site plans, but they felt that for the massage therapy, that they were going to make sure they vetted, you know, each applicant, and, you know, and I think that's very helpful.
Okay.
And you can see there's a very positive, very positive, um, letter from, um, Officer Hogan.
That's a new, new something they're going to keep doing?
Yes, there, you know, every, every time you get a new captain, they kind of look at site plans a little differently. He thought this was an appropriate thing to do, and I, I, I'm really grateful for their time.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll take a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Point. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The Planning Commission's recommendation on this must be based on the following standards: The compatibility with adjacent land use, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. Planning Commission may recommend approval, disapprove, or table to evaluate information we've received this evening. Motion would be in order. Mrs. Caselli.
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board of Special Land Use Application number seventeen dash twenty-two to permit the establishment of a massage therapy business at one-four-zero-nine-zero Lakeside Boulevard based on the following findings. The business will occupy ground floor unit of a live-work unit on Lakeside Boulevard. Number two, the intent of the live-work units was to provide space for small retail and service businesses. Number three, the activities will be completely enclosed in the building. Number four, there is an approved site plan, and no additional site improvements are necessary to support this site. Number five, the proposed use is compatible with the other businesses located in the live-work units along Lakeside Boulevard. And number six, the proposed use will not adversely affect, adversely impact existing or surrounding development.
Support.
Motion by Mrs. Caselli, supported by Mr. Appone. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. Caselli?
Yes.
Mr. Appone?
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak?
Yes.
Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Mr. Sico?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Where should go? There, you disappeared. You're all set. Thank you. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Nguyen?
Just for the one moment, just, just so you know, the, this is a recommendation to the Township Board. It'll go to the Township Board on June twentieth, so I can talk to you ahead of time, but that's the next step, okay?
That's the next meeting.
That's the next meeting you'll need to be at.
Good night. Finally, our last public hearing for this evening is for site plan number seventeen dash fifteen, SLU five. Victor Jonai, vacant land, west side of Van Dyke, south of Twenty-Six Mile. Mrs. Caselli, will you please read this notice?
Yes. Notice is hereby given that Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, Victor Jonai, JVD one LLC, four-five-five-one-one Market Street, Shelby Township, Michigan, four-eight-three-one-five. The proposed use is retail center with drive-through. The location is vacant land, west side of Van Dyke, south of Twenty-Six Mile Road. Site plan seventeen dash fifteen, SLU dash five. Sidwell number twenty-three dash zero-seven dash zero-four dash two-seven-seven dash zero-zero-eight. Legal description: The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, at seven PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, fifty-two-seven-hundred Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from eight-thirty to five. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act one-ten of two thousand six as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffitt, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary, published May seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Forty-nine property owners and one applicant was notified by first-class mail on May fifth, two thousand 49 property owners and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on May 5, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. On this notice, does this meet all legal requirements as outlined under state statute and local ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. And could you explain the uses under this zoning and whether this special land use is appropriate?
Current zoning is C2, which is our linear retail district. The uses requested here fit that. However, because of the drive-through, a special land use is required.
Okay, thank you. Did we receive any correspondence on this, Mr. Nguyen?
No.
None? Okay. Format for this public hearing will be the same as the other two. The petitioner will, or representative, will give his or her presentation stating the reasons for the request. The Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public. And the petitioner will then make any concluding remarks. I see the petitioner is here. Go ahead, sir. The floor is yours.
Thank you. John Delise Lemwith, PEA, 59255 Van Dyke, Washington Township. Speaking on behalf of Victor Jonai, who's also present, representing the Development Group. And we wanted to briefly describe the proposal tonight, which amounts to a 10,000-square-foot retail space, along with 2,000-square-foot restaurant slash drive-through use on the south end. Now, it's, it's one retail development proposed in two pieces, and looking to the board to the right, what we are asking for approval tonight on would be the southern building, fronting on Van Dyke, and also the detention system behind it. That L shape excluding the northeast corner, where there would be a freestanding restaurant drive-through use to be proposed in the future. Currently, we've got five existing approaches that are remnants of the retail, excuse me, the residential uses that were there prior to the rezoning. We're going to remove those five and create two new entrances, the northern one of which would be shared with the future development to the north. Both sites, and we've shown a building for the north side, just for the sake of the square footage and the parking count, both sites exceed the parking that's required. And the reasons behind that is to have greater flexibility in the pursuit, pursuit of tenants. Each site has its own trash and loading facilities in the back and are screened. And fortunately, with the applicant's interest in moving the building forward, it gave us an opportunity to, to get some greater space with the residential that's to the north and the future residential that's to the west, along with the existing residential to the southwest. We've got about a 200-foot space there with really a dual buffer of trees and berm or south direction on either side of that detention system. Architecture for proposed building. While you is the architect, you might have seen, I think their most recent work might have been at 23 and Hayes with the mod pizza there at the corner. What's common with, with their work is the differentiating of the different tenant spaces with different materials, and you don't have a, kind of a homogeneous brick front or consistent material across the entire fronts. This building that we're proposing falls in between size-wise with what's to the north of us. I think there's, I want to say 170 and 130 to the north of us. This is around 150. So, with that, we would open it up for any questions or hear from the residents.
I want to clarify something I think I heard. I may have misunderstood you. You, you don't want us to consider the northern building? You only want us to consider the southern building, not the whole piece? Did you, did I understand that correctly?
We've been asked to come back with a site plan for the restaurant to the north. We're asking for approval on the site plan.
Right. Okay, that's, okay.
But the use would have to come back in.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Nguyen.
What'll happen is, because we don't have building elevations, we'll have to bring this back, and it may be that, there may be some slight changes to the, the site plan on that northerly site to accommodate it. But at least it's a placeholder, and we're seeing how this all fits together. So, it's, it's a really good design, but they, they'll have to come back, because, again, we don't know what the building looks like.
Okay, I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? You have anything else to add, sir? That's it? Okay. And open it to the public, but first, this is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on the special land use request. Anyone from the audience wish to come forward and speak about this, for or against? They're free to do so at this time. Just if you could, sign in over here and give us your name and address for the record, please.
I live at 7663 West Pearson. I just have a couple of questions. I know it's in the beginning stages. I just have, want to know if they have any interest, if they know who the tenants are possibly going to be in that plaza. And my other question is, once it is approved through the township, when do they plan on starting the building? When do they plan on having it open construction times? And the other concern I have is, West Pearson has been used as a headquarters for construction anywhere near my street, and I've had a lot of complaints, because my daughter's bus stop is right there at the corner of West Pearson and Van Dyke. So, I'm just kindly asking ahead of time that they don't park trucks and use it as their work base during the construction time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Going once, twice? That's it, we'll close it out. Mr. Nguyen?
This was an outstanding submission. The only comment they have that sort of substance is the fact they'll have to come back for that other building. The other comments are relatively minor in scope. Again, a very, very thorough, comprehensive submission.
Okay. Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. ...
Question for Glenn. So, the, tonight, they're considering the drive-through on, for both buildings, subject to a site plan on the northern building?
Yes, yes. Because, I mean, you can tell, at least for the northerly building, this, the, the building's going to be configured that way, and the access, it will, you know, we want to make sure that all the access works together. It's unlikely they would come in and do this differently. Mr. Jonai's in this business a long time. He would know if a tenant would, would, would fit in that configuration.
So, when they come back, they're not going to come back for special land use, only a site plan?
Yes, but I think we would let the lease residents know, so if anybody's interested in seeing that, they could have a chance to see it.
There were some questions brought up I'd like to address with you. Do you have an idea about any tenants for the plaza yet? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Victor Jonai with JVD LLC, 45511 Market Street in Shelby Township. We have been speaking with some tenants right now, but what we didn't want to do is go out and promise something that we didn't know you had your full support on. But basically, what you're going to see is neighborhood-type tenants, you know, your, your nail salon, dry cleaners. We're trying to get a little bit more upscale, just because of the area and the way it's evolving. But like I said, I didn't want to go out there and overpromise something, not be able to deliver without your, without your blessing on this project.
And what about the drive-through? Do you have an idea of what that will be?
I have two, well, now, three, as of today, potential users that are interested. But once again, they have asked us not to disclose, but it would be a, a fast-food user, none of which are 24-hour operations.
Okay. When do you believe you'd begin construction on this section here?
Based on the, the timing, I would probably say sometime in August, September, depending on how quickly we go through the process of engineering and, you know, there's also the project to the rear of us that we're going to be sharing, the detention retention. So, we're all kind of going to try to go hand-in-hand to minimize the impact on the neighborhood.
And then, you're familiar with the comments you made about no construction equipment will be parked or used on Pearson Road?
Yep. We actually are working with the developer behind us to have him be able to utilize our property to get through to the rear for his road construction, so it doesn't impact the residents in the surrounding area.
Mr. Nguyen, a question on the, since they're going to begin maybe August, September, what, what will this do for the construction entrance coming in off of Van Dyke to the rear of the property to crimson court?
Well, they're going to have to coordinate that. I would suspect that that might happen first, or, you know, some of that's going to have to be, that's kind of a, a coordination issue.
Correct. And what, and, you know, August, September is just a, a date that we're looking at, but it could be sooner, it could be, just depending on how, you know, the process goes and with, you know, engineering approvals, building permits, et cetera.
Okay. Any other Commissioners? Mr. Wozniak?
Yeah, actually, for Mr. Nguyen, with that construction road going to the back, then they're going to put in the berm and, and the trees later?
Yes.
Okay. Is this berm and trees sufficient?
Yes, there's, there's a couple of factors that are that work in our favors. You know, when you're screening, not only do you have sufficient screening, but you also have distance. There's about several hundred, a couple hundred feet from the back of the commercial building, parking lot, to the, past the pond. So, there's separate, there's great separation, as well as sufficient screening around that. I'm satisfied that it's adequate.
For the petition, do you have any idea where that construction road is going to go through, the north side?
You know, at this point, we don't. We're trying to figure out the best way to approach it, and we, without, we haven't made it that far yet to figure out how we're going to kind of team up and work together so we can minimize the impacts to the neighborhood behind us.
Okay, and you're going to want that to come back, to look at where the road's going to go, or do you care?
I think that we handle it engineering.
Flexible?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Any other Commissioners have any questions? Mr. Dallo.
To Mr. Nguyen, the restaurant is going to be the same size that's, we're just waiting for the actual site plan, or that's going to change?
Yes. Now, what happens is, depending on which, which tenant or user is interested, Mr. Dallo, there may be some tweaks in sizes, but I think that size is generally what you'd find for most of those fast-food restaurants. Am I correct, Victor?
Correct, absolutely. That's generally the size that you'll see. Sometimes you'll deviate five feet one way or five feet the other way, but for the most part, that's, that's roughly the size that you will see for a typical fast-food user.
One more question for Mr. Nguyen. We don't have to add any other protections around the retention pond.
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Dallo.
Just a, a comment to a use of tenant. Well, Mr. Jonai, very proficient in real estate, so I couldn't think of anybody that could go there, because there's everybody there. But with his profession, I'm very sure he could, he could manage with that, so I'll give him credit for that.
May anyone else? All right, you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Jonai? Okay. I'll have a motion to close a public hearing.
So moved.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following. The compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval, disapprove, or table to evaluate information we've received tonight. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Appone.
I move to approve the Site Plan Application Number 17-15 SLU-5 for Victor Jonai, JVD LLC, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Or, motion by Mr. Appone, supported by Mr. Wozniak. Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Appone.
Yes.
Mr. Wozniak.
Yes.
Mr. Dallo.
Yes.